Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically by a Zoom on July 30th, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Pursuant to, to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 20, on July 25th, 2025, and has been posted to the municipal website, wwwprincetonnj.gov/meetings. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during this declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 24th day of April, 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the municipal complex and on the Princeton website and will be maintained throughout the year, and by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton's. Princeton notices have been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Claudia, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Present.
Mr. Telenbaum?
Here.
Mr. Stein?
Here.
Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Mr. Topkin?
Here.
Chairman Cohen?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we have two carryover applications this evening. First is case Z25-623, 728 Bun Drive, Block 2801, Lot 11, in the Office Research Zone, OR1. We started the application last week and, or we started the application several weeks ago, and we're continuing with this, continuing with it this evening. Claudia is the applicant or the applicant attorney here?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Lario?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Michael.
Excuse me, one second. Before we begin, Derek, do you have, I know you received correspondence on this. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, just a few comments.
Derek, I'll just swear you in. I don't see any of our other consultants on the screen at the moment, so I'll just swear you in for now. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the applicant submitted a traffic parking study on July 17th. We received it July 18th. I responded on the 22nd with a letter advising them of some issues that we had with the parking study. The analysis used in the study was Section 10B 282, which is a general parking study, and they use convalescent homes, hospitals. However, the crust or the thrust of their argument is that the rehab center is the same as a nursing home, which has a conditional use and it has a conditional use parking requirement that's specific. And it's a little different than the typical parking requirement, which you must have that parking requirement. If, if the parking analysis says you have 10 spaces, that's what you have to have. The 10B 272.44 is a conditional use standard associated with a nursing home. And by extension, the applicant's proposed rehab use, which he contends is basically the same use. It states that no more than the number of off-street parking required to meet the needs of the residents, employees, and guests shall be allowed. The applicant shall submit a parking study prepared by an expert to justify its need for the proposed number of spaces. The applicant's proposed number shall not exceed the number produced by applying the following standards for determining the number of required parking spaces. And A is 0.30 spaces per nursing care bed or assisted living bed, one space per staff member on the maximum shift, and an additional 10% of the sum of the nursing bed total and the staff total. In addition, the requirements of Section 10B 291.1 apply, which is the bank parking. So that staff did utilize that calculation. We came up with a parking requirement based on the ordinance of 79. And I, and I note with that 79 space requirement, the previous nursing home had a parking requirement of 78 spaces. However, they presented a 50-page parking analysis that showed, based on their current use at the nursing home on Quarry Street in Princeton before they moved, they only needed the 60 spaces and they banked the other 20 spaces. The applicant doesn't really arrive at a number in their space. They note that there are 60 existing parking spaces, that 38 spaces would be accommodated by the maximum work shift, employee shift. So they should identify, you know, what's the next shift? It's just kind of nebulous. It says there's 38 spaces, there's 22 left over. This will cover the next shift, the people coming and going. And I also note that the number of beds referenced in the parking study is now 102. When initially the appeal came in, there was 148 beds. We'd like the applicant to address the drop in the number of beds. And they utilized a comparative study of a Boca facility in Galloway Township in South Jersey, but they don't identify the number of beds. I just identified the number of employee, employees. So we would ask that they speak to the number of, you know, beds at that facility to see if it's an apt comparison to the 102 bed unit here, project here. And I, and I know the, the nursing home had 100, I believe, 19 beds. They needed 60 parking spaces. So it's, it's just funny how this applicant has less parking spaces, but needs a higher parking demand. But we don't know what the demand is at this point because he doesn't really identify. So those are some current concerns that we had. Bank parking is spoken about. I don't know if that's to remain banked or, you know, I guess we'll hear that in the applicant's presentation. So those are a few comments I had. I, I know Dan Weisman's here. If he has anything to add. Also, Justin Lesko, the municipal director of planning is here. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Bridger, just for clarification, the resolution from 1999 that approved the nursing home, I believe it did have a provision in there that bank parking spaces would require site plan approval. Is that correct?
Yeah, they required that they return to the planning board and get site plan approval for it, which kind of makes sense. They do note the 20 spaces on the site plan. They do reference 10B 291, the bank parking section, as part of that on their site plan. They do show the travel aisle, but, you know, I'm sure somebody doesn't want to go to the expense of a detailed engineering analysis since any environmental issues that might be, need to be addressed if you don't need those spaces. So that's why the requirement is to return to the planning board and submit a site plan for the conversion of those bank spaces to actual parking spaces.
Derek, is it acceptable and normal practice to compare parking at a off-site like they're doing in this? Cause I haven't seen that before where they're justifying parking here based on a different.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a good analysis. It's just, we don't really know what we're comparing it to because we don't know the bed count. But no, it's, it's the same operation that they use. You would think that it has the same economy of scale and they could extrapolate that out. It's just, we would like to hear some more information about, you know, how many beds are there, how similar it is to the, the project that they're looking at here. So.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir. I mean, that's exactly what the nursing home did. You know, they had the prior user here had an actual nursing home on Quarry Street in Princeton, and they analyzed that for the new location on Bun Drive. So it's acceptable to do that.
Okay, board members, any questions to Mr. Bridger? Okay, do we want to, Mr. Lasco, Mr. Weisman, do you have any comments to make?
I don't have any other comments, Mr. Chair. I'll just reiterate kind of the through line of what Derek just said. You know, this was an appeal back in February of his decision. We then received additional information. Then since the last meeting, we received additional information. You know, this seems to be turning into a site plan review without our full kind of, you know, parameters of a site plan review.
Justin and Dan, I should have sworn you in. You both swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so neither you or Mr. Weisman have any additional comments? So I guess let's.
Sorry, just the, the only thing I would add, Mr. Schreiber, the question regarding the parking study, usually you'd see some information from the ITE Parking Generation Manual. That's the Institute of Traffic Engineers. It didn't appear that the letter referenced any studies done on that. So I would just ask the applicant if they could address if any studies were done and if there's any comparison between a nursing home use and this use within that manual.
I had the same question, actually. Okay, all right. So, Mr. Lario, do you want to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. Again, for the record, Michael Lario from the firm of Nemat Davis and Goldstein. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, True Princeton LLC. As was stated, this is a continuation of the application that was before you, June 24th, 2025. The applicant is respectfully requesting the appeal of the zoning officer's February 26th, 2025 determination, which denied a zoning permit for the operation of a licensed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility at the subject site. I know there was substantial testimony provided at our last hearing in June. There was a question raised as to the parking adequacy. A parking report was prepared by our traffic engineer who's here tonight. He's going to testify, Nicholas Kennedy, as to the content of that report and his determination. Ultimately, though, I, I think it's important for the board to keep in mind that the principal question we're seeking is, the question is to use. Whether or not what we are proposing is a continuation of what was previously approved just from a use standpoint. And I understand the question raised as to the need for parking, the adequacy of parking on site, whether additional parking spaces are required under the language for the banked parking spaces. But I think just as a threshold issue, we need to determine whether or not this proposed drug and alcohol rehabilitation facility constitutes a continuation of the prior nursing home use that was approved at the site. Going back to the parking question for, for one moment, originally we had proposed to utilize the 60 parking spaces on site with 148 beds. The ordinance looks at both the number of beds and the number of employees in calculating the anticipated need, the required need for parking on site. In attempting to stay in conformity with what that ordinance requires, determination was made to reduce the overall bed count to 102, thereby reducing the employee count as well and reducing that parking demand on site. Our traffic engineer, Mr. Kennedy, will provide testimony tonight, though, that in his professional opinion, the 60 parking spaces, it was adequate for 148 spaces and it certainly will be adequate for 102 spaces. Fundamentally, though, the proposal from what we're seeking tonight and what we sought June 24th is the same. We're proposing a licensed, subacute, non-hospital-based detox and rehabilitation facility that will occupy a purpose-built institutional medical use on the site. As was discussed last month at length, both facilities, the nursing home use and the drug and alcohol rehabilitation use are deemed healthcare facilities under the law. Under the Healthcare Facilities and Planning Act, it's NJSA 26:2H-1. Both uses involve 24/7 medical supervision. Both are licensed and regulated by the New Jersey Department of Health. Both provide residential care in an institutional setting. The only difference that has been cited between these two uses is that nursing and rehabilitation facilities receive their license pursuant to NJAC 8:39, and the drug and alcohol rehabilitation facilities receive their license pursuant to NJAC 10:161. From a zoning perspective, from a land use perspective, it's our position that such a distinction is irrelevant. It doesn't impact any land use considerations for this board. It's a licensing standard with different citations in the administrative code. I think critically, New Jersey courts have been presented with this issue and have continuously rejected attempts to distinguish these types of healthcare facilities based on strictly the licensing required for their use. And the reason is because functionally, they are equivalent. They're the same use, design, impact. They're looked at from a land use perspective as the same use. You'll hear tonight from members of our professional team, including the professional traffic engineer who I mentioned, Dr. Allison Tarlo, who spoke at last month's meeting, a licensed psychologist on behalf of Boca, and our professional planner, Mr. Andrew Janow, that the revised proposal before you, we believe, addresses the parking concerns that were raised at the last meeting and continues to satisfy all applicable zoning and conditional use standards in your code. Most importantly, this is taking a building which is currently vacant. It's allowing it to transform into a productive use, help meet an urgent public health need in a way that's both legally compliant and responsibly operated. We respectfully submit that the proposed use remains functionally identical to what was previously approved. It's not triggered the need for conditional use variance relief pursuant to NJSA 40:55D-70D3, and that a zoning permit can be issued for the continuation of this use. I, I would note, just as one small housekeeping issue before we get to the testimony tonight, I know at the last meeting, there was a request made for a legal memorandum of some of the legal issues that are being discussed. I was informed that the applicant wouldn't be receiving a copy of that legal memo. As this board knows, you are right now acting in a quasi-judicial capacity here. You're being asked to interpret a legal question. Ultimately, whether or not what was there previously is and approved previously for the site is being continued with the present proposal. You've been provided relevant substantive legal authority and analysis to that specific question. Withholding that information from the applicant puts us at somewhat of a disadvantage here before the board. We're not sure what the authority you're relying upon. It just makes it difficult for us to respond to that accordingly. I know that there was an assertion that it's attorney-client privilege. Again, we disagree with that assertion here. It's a legal issue that is part of this board's public deliberation process and it's likely going to be utilized by this board as part of their public deliberation process. And, and for those reasons, we feel that the applicant should have been provided a copy of that memo prior to the commencement of this meeting. I, I provided a written objection, but I'm just putting that objection on the record now.
And I just wanted to respond briefly. Since the applicant has raised numerous times as part of their appeal letter and during the hearing, some weeks ago, their intention to sue, if they did not receive the approval they were seeking, it seems to me that the board was entitled to a, an attorney-client privileged review, since I think we could fairly consider this a situation of potential litigation. So, and that's my understanding as to why I was asked to provide it to them on a confidential basis. So I understand Mr. Lario's objection and he's put that on the record. But this is my understanding as to why the board felt they should be able to get privileged advice.
Ms. Casey, if I may, I guess the only question I have is the content of that legal memo as to the board's potential exposure under the federal law, under the ADA and FHA? Or does it deal with the legal question as to whether or not this is a continuation of the previously approved use? Or both?
It, I was asked for to advise them as to the cases you cited. Do they stand for the proposition that you are citing them for? And also exposure as well, so.
And I think that's where, and I certainly don't concede the exposure, but I, I understand how an argument can be made for that portion. I think it's the first part as to the legal analysis where I, I particularly take objection to because that's a legal issue that this board is being asked to decide right now. And the authority that you're being provided and likely going to rely upon, we weren't provided that before this meeting.
Well, I, what I'll say is if the board wants me, as we go through this, to talk about cases, or I'm, I'm happy to do that. So I'll leave that up to the board. If board members still have questions or they have any questions of me regarding the cases you're citing, I'm happy to answer them on the record, so.
Okay. Are you saying that you'd be willing if the board requested it to summarize your memo?
If the board wants me to, I could certainly do that. I'm happy to do that if you want me to.
Board members, do you have any objection to Ms. Casey going over the memo in the hearing?
Or do you want to think about that and see where you are after you hear the testimony?
Mr. Floyd has his hand raised?
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
No, I, I was gonna ask something else. How many attorneys do we have on our board? No one has any comment here? Whether a confidential memo remains confidential? I'm sorry.
I can't understand why we should be disclosing a confidential memo, but especially something that it was presented to us as advice by counsel. So, you know, maybe I'm missing something here and I'm happy to be educated about that. But the applicant that's come before us has threatened to litigate if we don't decide the way that they want us to decide. And now they're asking for us to divulge our playbook. Why would we do that? I, I, I'm failing to see that. So perhaps I'm happy to be educated about it. Boy, I hate doing this under threat. But if, if that's what we, we need to go to the mattresses, we've got phenomenal counsel and they're not gonna do it. Really rather not, but if we need to, we will.
And I can respond to that in, in two parts. One, I think if the memo concerns both the legal question before this board and the potential exposure, I think those are two separate issues. And, and while I understand the argument for the potential exposure, I think the legal question that ultimately this board is going to deliberate and decide on, that's a public deliberation. And, and the, and what they base that deliberation on and the legal authority they base that deliberation on should be shared, not just with the applicant, but with the public at large. I think to the second part as to the, the threat of litigation, and I know that was referenced before, it, it's something that I, I have an obligation on behalf of my client to, to not only indicate that there are federal laws and state laws at play here, but that this is a situation where those federal and state laws are implicated. I, I would be doing a disservice to my client if I didn't mention that and the potential repercussions. So to say that you have to go my way or we're going to sue you, that's not the argument we're making. The argument we're making is legally, what we're asking for is well-supported by the law. With that being said, there are, we're talking about a protected class of individuals and with that brings in a whole additional area of the law here that gives them certain protections. And again, I have an obligation to say that and put that on the record.
I have a suggestion. Why don't we let the hearing proceed? And if it's appropriate to revisit this issue, we can. But I, I know the applicant has witnesses available who are either going to give more testimony or happy to answer questions. So perhaps we should move ahead with that so that we can let the hearing continue. And if, once they're done with their presentation, if it's appropriate to revisit this, we can. Does that sound like a good plan?
Reasonable, I mean, board members?
Me too.
George, do you still have a question? And Michael, could you still have your hands raised?
Yes.
Yes, I do. It's a slightly different question. In the event that we, as a board, vote to uphold the, the denial and the applicant chooses not to sue, what would be the procedure for them to come back to the board with something that would, in fact, be acceptable? In other words, a different application? Would that be, you know, a tremendous burden or a small burden?
Well, I guess it depends on, it depends on who you're asking, but and I had, I had planned to touch on this, but since you've asked, we can talk about it now. Mr. Bridger took the position that the applicant needed conditional use authorization and a site plan. And for that reason, he denied their zoning permit. In his review memo to you, he acknowledged that he, he thought the uses were similar. So I guess one of the things you could look at tonight would be if you find that these uses are very similar, perhaps not identical, but very similar, and that the difference and that the condition that cannot be met under the OR zone where it's located is that they, they can't get a nursing home license. It's not, they're, they're not a nursing home. I had told you at the beginning of the last hearing that I thought procedurally, since you were going to hear testimony from all their witnesses, that, and because I understood their notice to act, to indicate they were seeking any variances or under other relief that was necessary, that you could, without the need for the filing of an application for a conditional use variance, you could tonight consider that issue and whether you wanted to give that variance. I had planned on asking Mr. Bridger, is there some additional information that he thinks he would get from an actual application for a conditional use variance? Meaning if the applicant went back and filled out the application form, is there something else in that application that you would say, yeah, you know, I'm looking for that information? Or are we, aside from the similarity of the uses and the board's willingness to give that relief, is there, is it the site plan that is the document that's going to provide the information?
I mean, I think the mystery right now is the parking, and I'd like to hear about that from the applicant. But as, as it's been stated many times during the, the last two nights of testimony or the previous two nights of testimony, there are no site improvements proposed. It's, it's a very similar use. I would like to know how the bed count drops from 148 to 102. I mean, I feel like, as Justin said, it's kind of somewhat of a moving target. But the site is fully developed as it is right now. No external stuff is proposed. So I think the board can make a intelligent decision tonight on the, the use factor without necessarily having a full site plan. If, if parking becomes an issue, then that would definitely require a site plan. I, I don't think the previous planning board's resolution has any wiggle room with that regard.
Mr. Bridger, I know the resolution from 1999, it refers to those 20 extra spaces as banked spaces? I'm going to ask you, because my understanding of that term is that it means the applicant didn't need a variance for those 20 spaces. But the resolution indicates, if it were the nursing home coming back to you, they would need to provide site plan for that. So am I, is, is my interpretation of that or my understanding, is that consistent with yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does that answer your question, George? There is, does that answer your question, George?
Yes.
Okay.
But I just, if Mr. Lario has something to add, I'd be happy to listen.
Yeah. Mr. Stein, I think it's a very fair question, asking the applicant, well, can you just go in for D3 variance relief? And I think the, what we're, what we're, provides us caution about proceeding down that road are really three things. The first is legally. provides us caution about proceeding down that road are really three things. The first is legally, we feel we don't have to, that this is a continuation of the same use based upon our analysis of existing case law. I think two, for a D three variance, as this board well knows, the burden to establish that is, is much heavier. It's a greater burden that the applicant has to bear. You need a super majority of votes, five out of seven affirmative votes, and the proofs that are required are greater. So there's simply more risk involved in going for a D three as opposed to a favorable interpretation. The third reason is you open yourself up to potential challenge and you're that much more susceptible if a third party wanted to come because you had sought D three variance relief. And there are more avenues in which that relief could be challenged by some interested party. So for those three reasons, obviously the, the most important one is we feel we're legally justified in requesting it. We're seeking the favorable interpretation that this is a continuation of the previously permitted use.
You would like that determination before we continue to hear, is that what you're saying?
Well, we're, we're happy to go through our, our testimony, Mr. Chairman, and provide some of support for some of the amendments, the application that were included with that last submission and testimony as to the parking demands and support for the parking spaces on site.
Michael, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, um, something along the lines with George's ass, but not the same thing. Um, there's, you know, two things here in, in my view is the appeal of Derek's decision. Not based on state law, it's based on what the, the, the local Princeton zoning code says, and did he interpret that correctly? And that says what it says. Now, I think we should vote on that now. I don't need to hear for the fourth time around a lot of the same arguments I've heard before, but I, if it is agreed that Derek made the right call based on the zoning code, then I'm all for, okay, next step, let's have this variance here. That's the next thing, but I, I don't think we need to hear a lot of stuff before that vote on just whether he read the local zoning code correctly. So I don't know how we decide that. I don't know if that's something Mr. Lario would uh, agree, let's get that out the way. If Karen would agree that that's a, a reasonable way to go, or maybe there's reasons why not. That's all.
Michael, are you saying that the board determined that they think Derek's interpretation is correct? Are you saying that the board should go ahead tonight? And consider the variance? Are you saying this applicant needs to come back?
Well, I thought it was clear and I, I thought you spoke to it that they were making, they were providing information even last week for us to consider the poss, having, if we go forward a variance, if we.
Well, I mean, I, I did say that I thought the applicant was providing information to you. Uh, the applicant's position is I don't say they don't want a D three variance, they're saying they don't need it. So.
That's irrelevant to us deciding whether Derek Bridger interpreted or read the municipal land use law for this town. And, and as it applies, yeah. I did, but you know, that's, that's just my thing.
If, if I may, I, I, I understand, Mr. Floyd, the, the question you're asking. I, I ultimately, though, I think having us provide our plant engineers' parking testimony this evening certainly won't. It's gonna have to be provided regardless. I think it would be more appropriate for the board at the conclusion of the testimony tonight to then go through and first address the question as to the appeal. Um, and then make a determination as to how to proceed from there. But I, I, I do think though, I, I just wanna get back to one point is the appeal concern specifically that question is to the condition of the section of the regulations and the lawfulness of that, 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 and it's not, it, it's not simply just the ordinance provision, but it's how that ordinance, it doesn't exist in a vacuum. It obviously exists in conformity with state law.
But it was written as the town saw fit the right. State law, state law does not overrule other than through litigation.
I'm, I'm sure this board wants to act in conformity with state law. You're right. It doesn't automatically overrule it. Correct.
Hey, I, I wish it could go to town council and they could change it if it needs to be changed.
I understand.
But the zone, the zoning code exists right now as he read it. And it says what it says.
And I think that, that speaks to, again, this quasi judicial capacity this board is, is sitting in right now, that they can take into account the zoning code, they can take into account the legal authority in making their determination.
And we can grant you variances, but we didn't, we don't need to do that just on the issue of whether or not he erred or he didn't error in reading the local code. And I think, you know, that's all. I, I think I'm clear enough on this. So I, I don't really wanna go back and forth and I don't want all of us to keep going. We've gone like a half an hour longer than I thought we were gonna do, you know, before we got into this.
Hey Steve, is it possible to, to just go uh, or, or have like a, an executive session now? So we as the board can discuss some things and then come back. Can we do that for a short period of time? Is that feasible?
I mean, is that appropriate?
Well, I guess the question though, Harlan, is do you want to hear the additional testimony from the applicant first or?
I'm, I'm thinking that it may make sense for us as a board to go over a couple of things. Um, and then that would determine whether we, um, I, I think we should hear the testimony at some point, but I think it would make sense if um, we were able to share some things amongst ourselves.
Yeah, I, I think that's an appropriate thing to do if we can. How do we do that?
Well, I'll make.
I mean, the applicant was asked to begin, but I, I, if there are things that you feel you wanna discuss now, uh, I don't know if procedurally or whatever they are, then uh, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Okay, so I, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting for the, for a, a period of time. And then we will.
Oh, wait, 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 I missed, wait, wait, I misunderstood. When you said executive, I thought you meant just a discussion now.
That's what I'd like, it's just that, I'd just like a discussion now amongst ourselves.
That's a compliment. You know, because our regular executive session is open to the public and open to that.
So I would like, I would like to have just something amongst ourselves for a couple of minutes if we can.
I, I, I can't, I can't uh, I can't advise that that's a good idea to go into closed session in the middle of an applicant's hearing.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think that's appropriate. Um. And so that, that partly was, I mean, in the confidential communication that you got that was intended to try and address questions that you might have had. Um, so now I, I can't recommend that in the middle of this uh, hearing that you go into closed session. So that's, that's my advice to you.
Okay, so then our course of action would be to continue on with the hearing right now.
Correct.
Board members, any comments on that?
Continue.
Okay, so let's, let's, um, I guess Mr. Lario. You know, Mr. Bridger has made his comments. You've heard the discussion so far, please start your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first witness I'm going to call is Dr. Allison Tarlo. Dr. Tarlo, there you are. Now, I know you've previously been sworn in and qualified as an expert in substance abuse treatment. Uh, Ms. Casey, I, I don't know if.
No, Mr. Dr. Tarlo, you remain under oath.
Okay, perfect. Um, so Dr. Tarlo, again, you've previously been sworn in and qualified. Um, just to confirm for the record, the previous submission was for one hundred and forty-eight beds. That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and we are proposing now to reduce the bed count to a hundred and two. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and, and largely that is driven, that reduction in the total bed count is to bring the site into greater conformity with the available parking on site, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and to your knowledge, that parking requirement's driven both by the number of employees and the number of beds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's speak to the number of employees. Obviously, this is a heavily regulated field here. Um, the licensing requirements require a certain number of employees for these uses. Can you speak to the specific number of employees that would be required for a hundred and two bed facility?
Yes, for a hundred and two bed facility, the number of staff who would be um, in the building working during the day would be thirty-eight.
Okay, and, and just briefly, some of those individuals, the, the titles, the roles, what would they be?
Yes, so we have, um, as we discussed at the previous hearing, um, we have one medical director. We have one director of nursing, we have a director of operations, we have a clinical director, and then we move into the nursing staff where, wherein we would have one RN per every twenty patients. And we would have one clinical therapist per every eight patients. And that comes under the New Jersey regulations and requirements for a facility such as this. And then in addition to that, we would have um, what we call behavioral health technicians who are sort of paraprofessionals. Uh, we would have um, several housekeepers, we would have several chefs who would be working on, um, you know, alternating schedules. So that's what um, the, the makeup of the staff would look like.
And that total number counting everyone on the busiest shift would be thirty-eight.
Correct. And then on the second shift after that, or, or the third shift overnight would be m, m, far less.
Okay, and that's at a full buildout of a hundred and two beds with every bed occupied as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, and just to confirm, I know we talked about it last month's meeting, the one hundred and two residents, they will not be allowed to have vehicles while they are in the facility. That's correct?
That's correct.
And visitors will largely be restricted for individuals within the facility, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have for Dr. Tarlo.
Board members, any questions?
Um.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I have one question um, for Mr. Laurie and Dr. Tarlo. Um. We had some neighbors at the first hearing concerned about residents um, walking um, through the facility, you know, through um the woods or the, the grounds and perhaps into their Campbell Woods neighborhood. Um, how is that type of situation handled?
Dr. Tarlo, can you, you speak to that in, in your experience running these facilities? How, how a situation like that, I think as you explained at the previous meeting, obviously the individuals there are not kept against their will, but a situation where someone to, wanted to leave the facility, what would be the protocol for that?
So the protocol that would be in place is that if that individual um, verbalized their desire to leave the facility, at that point, we are meeting with them and we are speaking with them about what are some of the reasons why they would want to leave treatment, what is a plan for them? So that if they do decide to leave treatment, they have um, transportation plan and a place that they're going to be going to, which may involve us helping facilitate that transfer. Um, if they were to walk out of the facility, typically what happens is um, several staff members will go and speak with that individual, um, encourage them to turn around and come back basically so that we can encourage a, what we call a plan for discharge. So we are not a locked facility in that we are not uh, keeping people at, against their will or by force. However, we are in the business of ensuring that everybody has the best possible outcome in their treatment and care. So therefore we would be working with them to make a plan for them to discharge safely.
Just, I'm sorry.
Actually, my question was if a, if a, a patient um, says, look, I, I just wanna go for a walk um, outside and I'll come right back, you know, I mean, i- is that something that commonly happens? I, I'm just trying to gauge, you know, um, the potential impact on this neighborhood.
Generally, when somebody wants to go for a walk, um, and they are at the facility, um, we have outside areas where they can go for a walk with a fresh air break and they would be going on that local walk around the facility or on the grounds of the facility with support staff, so they would not be um, wandering off on their own.
There's twenty-four seven medical supervision.
That, that didn't answer the question. If it's not a locked facility, if people are allowed to do what they wanna do, and if somebody wants to walk around the neighborhood, will they be prevented from doing so or will they be allowed to do so? The, the, you, you've given us a lot of valuable information, but none of it addresses the, the question. So what specifically, um, if I'm a, a patient and I decide that I wanna walk off, what's gonna prevent me from doing so?
So I think in Dr. Tarlo, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the first question is if you wanna get outside and walk around the site itself supervised, that is in certain situations permitted. I think the second part of the question is if you would wanna leave the site, walk around the neighborhood, that is not something that is permitted, correct?
Correct, that is not.
And because we're not a locked facility, if someone were to do that, go off into the neighborhood, staff members would go out, talk to that person and create what you just indicated was the, the discharge plan for them, correct?
Correct.
And in your experience, many years you've been doing this, is this a frequent issue that you, you encounter?
No, not where people want to wander off around local neighborhoods, no.
And, and part of the reason for that is obviously the people that are in this facility are there by their, their own choice, correct?
Correct, they come voluntarily upon admission, they are signing paperwork, they are made well aware of the rules and regulations that are in place as part of being engaged in the facility that we have. It's a, a treatment community. So yes, those are all issues that are already addressed at the front end of treatment. And people come there willingly, so they are signing up themselves for that treatment experience as opposed to um, you know, being forced in there like a prison.
Dr. Tarlo, can I just ask a follow-up question? You, you had said that the, the maximum staff would be, be during the daytime and your, your reference was at thirty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
What's the next shift? What's the amount of that?
Um, I would say the next shift would be this, what we call second shift, which would be sort of four or five o'clock through till about eleven or twelve, depending on how long that shift is. Um, and I would say that that would probably be about thirty, because at that point you have um, the same amount of staff. However, you would, you would have minus the clinical therapists, which would be um, actually be even less, cause it's one to eight. So you've got about eighteen uh, minus um, excuse me, so you've got your thirty-eight minus eighteen, so you're looking at about, I would say twenty staff on the second shift. Um, and then on the overnight, you're going to have a couple less, because we typically don't have a chef that works through the night and we usually don't have housekeepers that work on the midnight shift. So again, you've got uh, several other people that would not be there on the second or third shift. So I would estimate that you're probably looking at about twenty people um, on the second shift and maybe even eighteen or so on the third shift.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I uh, ask a, a, a follow-up question to the um, to the uh, residents leaving the bounds of the facility. How would staff know if, if a resident were to wa, walk off? Are there, are there cameras around the perimeter of the, the, of the site or just at the building? Or how, how are you aware of that?
Well, first of all, um, we have um sound systems on the doors, so we know when people come in and out of any doors anyway. Um, and then also we have cameras both inside and outside of the property and the surrounding area. Um, also, we have what we call Q safety checks. So every fifteen minutes, we have our star, our paraprofessional staff, our behavioral health techs who are going around and ensuring that all the patients are accounted for in the building and, you know, engaged in whatever activities are being offered. So there's a continuous documented check every fifteen minutes on every member of the um, treatment community that's in there.
And part of that reason is they're obviously receiving medical treatment, the same way that, that they need to make sure there's no issues that are going on with the medical treatment they're receiving, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
I'd like to follow up on that just a bit. What you've described, Dr. Tarlo, is essentially a system of passive monitoring. Have you considered active monitoring like ankle bracelets?
No, this is. No, this is not a facility that is going to penalize people, it is not a prison, it is not a jail. People are there voluntarily, they have, you know, they are either paying for treatment or they have private health insurance, this is not a state-run facility, so people come there because they want the help. These are people who actively want to get better. These are people who are not forced there, they are not children under the age of eighteen. So the 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 individuals who come to our facility for help are people who come there because they want the help.
I have a question. I have a question. Of the thirty-eight people that are at this peak time, who's responsible for security? Is are each individual, we each of the thirty-eight require or responsible for security? I mean, if a patient becomes unruly or something?
Well, we have, we have medical staff and clinical staff and behavioral health techs who are all qualified individuals who have not only got licenses in their own particular fields, but for the paraprofessionals, they have either come onboard because they have treatment experience at other facilities. Or they have undergone and and they have undergone an extensive onboarding process. So everybody who's in the building participates in that, but we have behavioral health tech staff and a director of operations who are primarily responsible in the movement of the individuals in the community as they go from, for example, group room to the nurses station and things of that nature.
If if someone needs, for whatever reason, this is rehab, if someone needs to be physically restrained, the the thirty-eight staff, someone in that group or people in that group would do that.
Correct, yes.
Please. Dr. Tarlo, what is the procedure that you would follow if a a patient, a resident wants to go outside, um, you know, wants to get some air, wants to take a walk around the grounds, around the woods, you know? What is the procedure and is there any, you know, physical barrier between, you know, the property and and that neighborhood?
I can't speak to the physical barrier, but I can tell you that throughout the day and into the evening, we have established schedules and breaks. So for example, during clinical hours and group time, the residents who are staying in the facility are not going outside for that fresh air or walk break. But there will be times of the day where they would be able to go outside for a ten-minute fresh air break. Again, at those assigned specific times. And then they and then when they do that, they go out with staff members and then they are brought back inside with the staff members. And then they can go outside and have another fresh air break later on when the next break is available for them.
So their their day and their night is that structured?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, and the nighttime also?
Yes, the evening, through the evening, they have activities, they have meetings, they have groups. There are also recreational activities inside the building and then they have bedtime where they then turn into their room and go to bed for the evening. So that is all structured clinical treatment time. It is not a hangout free-for-all, they are there to get well and we have structured evidence-based programming in order to provide them with the care that they need in order to obtain that wellness.
So there is a a point in the evening where it's like, you know, lights out, everybody in their room?
Absolutely, yes.
And what time is that?
Generally, at the other facilities, we have that at eleven o'clock. I I don't know what if if that would be, you know, it it's it's never been later than eleven. Sometimes it's been at different facilities that I have worked at that it's been ten o'clock. But, you know, usually eleven o'clock is, you know, in your room, lights out, time for bed.
And what time does their day start in the morning?
We start.
I'm having a hard time associating this with our zoning responsibilities. I I just have to say that, I don't I don't know how to how to connect with what what we're doing, what we're supposed to be doing.
I I'm just answering the questions, ma'am.
I know that, I know that.
Eve, I what I'm doing is trying to respond to some of the concerns that we heard from the neighbors at the last meeting.
The patients typically will wake up anywhere between seven o'clock in the morning and seven-thirty. And they will come downstairs and get vital signs or check in with the any medication needs they may have, and then they go to breakfast. And then the first groups typically start at nine AM. And then they run through till about nine PM with breaks in the middle and obviously mealtimes and different activities scheduled. And then in the evening, there are more recreational activities like art or watching a movie or gay gay video games or card games, you know, community-type activities in the facility until bedtime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question for Mr. Larry, uh, Chairman.
Yes, please.
Thanks. Uh, Mr. Larry, you mentioned earlier that you're asking for a hundred and two beds tonight, uh, after asking for a hundred and forty-eight at the last meeting and in your letter from March. And that was based on an argument by your planner that municipal staff had erred in nineteen ninety-nine by only allowing a hundred and twenty beds, um, based on our ordinance. Are you, uh, now that you're only asking for a hundred and two beds, abandoning that argument?
I don't think there was a question as to error, I think the what our planner, Mr. Janow is here, so and he's planning on testifying, so we certainly can have Mr. Janow respond to to what his position is. But I think he looked at, it was, I believe, a hundred and twenty units was how it was defined in your ordinance and units include a unit can have two beds within it. So under that analysis, you could have a hundred and twenty units, which in the proposed facility here, there are two beds to a unit. So you could have theoretically up to, and I believe in Mr. Janow, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, it would be two hundred and forty beds in the the facility as total. Now, what was originally proposed with the nursing home was one bed within each unit and it was a hundred and nineteen beds because there was only one bed per room. What we are proposing is two beds per room and because of that, we were able to go to a hundred and forty-eight. So I I I just, our position is both are compliant with the ordinance, it's just given the configuration we're proposing here that they they both meet the unit definition in your ordinance.
So are you saying a hundred and two units or a hundred and two beds?
So we are saying a hundred and two beds.
Okay.
Got it. Well, I'll I'll probably have questions later then for your planner.
Questions, board member? Yes, Michael.
Yeah, I I I listened to the questions, uh, I'll call it about the freedom of movement and security. And just as far as surrounding areas for some context, you know, there's not only and I'm not saying this is right or wrong, it's just a fact, there's not only the fifty units in Campbellton Woods. You know, large house development, plan plan unit development. It is next to Princeton Community Village, which is two hundred and sixty-three units. Seventy-one of them are senior units, one bedroom. The remaining one hundred and ninety-two are two, three and four bedrooms. So the neighbors to this that will now, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, who once had a nursing home next to it and are now going to have a drug and alcohol rehab. So I understand the questions that some of my fellow members have asked.
What what would be the, and I'm sorry, Mr. Floyd, the distinction would be?
I think, um, and I think it was raised last week by one of the neighbors. The level of activity of the and and the the resident profile of a nursing home, in my opinion, and now it's how I interpreted it, is a bit different, it may or more diverse than a rehab, drug and alcohol rehab.
In what regard is it more diverse? I just want to know, but I mean, I understand the nature of the people, but what do you?
You will, you will, you will probably have a higher percentage, I believe. And I I never dealt with nursing homes other than, um, but I have more more experience with assisted living, which morphed into being close to nursing homes. The age level, the average age level in assisted living is like eighty-four years old going in. So nursing home has a better mix of ages. And I don't know, but I think drug and alcohol rehab will have a different mix. They'll have older people, nursing homes will have some younger people, I understand that, but that's that I I think is, I think it's reasonable to say, but.
I I guess I'm I'm not seeing the connection from a land use, the impact to the site from the the patient profile.
Well, when you, I I understand what you're saying and and maybe I'm stretching it. When you look at and and maybe Justin, if if can chime in, if if I'm heading in the right direction in responding. When you're looking at zoning an area, prior to the nursing home, when they when they decided to do the conditional uses, you also look as part of the analysis on what the surrounding uses are. Is that correct? I'll throw that at at Justin. So how it was looked at when they were only considering a nursing home or an assisted living in zoning it, they might have looked at it differently if the issue of 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 rehab and and drug. I'm not saying, maybe they just overlooked it and they would have zoned it for rehab and drug, I don't know. As as a conditional use. But you do look at the surrounding uses when you're initially looking at zoning an area. That's all. That's that's the nexus I see.
It might be difficult to find out what happened at the time they crafted everything.
Oh, no, we'll never know that.
And again, I think with the the bed count that we're proposing, the testimony as to the employee requirements, the fact they're not going to have cars, not going to have visitors, I think there is a a good argument with the testimony that's been provided on this record that in the majority of ways, this will actually be less intensive of a use than the former nursing home use.
Okay, any other questions, board members? All right, so let's continue on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, next, I'd like to call Nicholas Kennedy. Nicholas, there you are. So Nicholas, you actually were not sworn in at the last meeting?
I was not.
I will swear in now, Mr. Kennedy, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we get into the testimony, if you could, could you please place your qualifications on the record?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, my license is current and in good standing. I hold a bachelor of science in civil engineering from the University of Hartford. I prepared over three hundred traffic and parking studies throughout the state and have been qualified as an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering in front of multiple boards throughout the state.
Mr. Chairman has an expert. So, Mr. Kennedy, let's first start with your familiarity with this project. In anticipation of tonight's meeting, you you had an opportunity to review all the submission items, correct?
That's correct.
And you also prepared a parking assessment report dated July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, um, can you speak a little bit as to the contents of that report, what that report analyzed?
Sure, so I'll kind of walk the board through the report again, it was a parking assessment assessment report that was dated July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. As I go through, I'll I'll try to answer all the questions from the beginning of the meeting. Again, please feel free to ask me at the end if I miss a couple. But really what we wanted to do was analyze the parking supply and demand of the site in a number of different ways. The the first obviously is to look towards the ordinance. And while the Princeton ordinance doesn't have a specific parking requirement for drug and alcohol rehab facilities, they do have parking requirements for nursing homes. And I think that's what Mr. Bridger referred to in his letter that he sent to us is to utilize the parking requirement for nursing homes that was part of the conditional use. That's one parking space per three beds, one space per staff member at peak shift and then an additional ten percent on top of those two parking requirements. So for our proposed facility, which is now a hundred and two beds and thirty-eight staff members at peak shift, this comes out to a parking demand of seventy-nine spaces required for the site. Again, we provide sixty physical parking spaces on the site and twenty banked parking spaces for a total of eighty. And I'll get more into why we believe the sixty parking spaces that exist on the site today is more than sufficient to satisfy the parking demand. I think what is important to note in um, in the code is that the parking requirement for a nursing home specifically says the applicant's proposed number shall not exceed the number proposed by applying the following standards for determining the number of required parking spaces. So I think as as I read that from the ordinance, that parking requirement that I read out of one per three beds, one per staff member and then an additional ten percent, that's seen as a maximum and then it goes on to say, uh, parking studies should be prepared to justify the number of most parking spaces. So I just wanted to put that on the record of how how the ordinance reads. The next thing we did, oh, sorry.
No, you keep going, I'm sorry for.
No problem. So the next thing we did is we wanted to conduct our own research. Again, the ordinance doesn't have a specific parking requirement for this exact facility, for a drug and alcohol rehab facility. Looking at industry data, there, again, there's really no data that has this exact facility. There's comparable uses, but I think, you know, being in this industry when looking at traffic studies and parking studies, when you don't have a a use that's really defined by whether that's the ITE and ordinance, the ULI, you look to conduct your own research to get a better understanding of, you know, the real world parking demand of sites just like this. Again, we studied a the Boca Recovery Center in Galway, New Jersey, that's owned and operated by the applicant here tonight. This facility, I think it was asked before, has twenty-two beds, so while it's definitely smaller than the proposed facility, I I'll walk through our thought process in in studying this development. What we did was we conducted parking counts at the site during a typical weekday when you would see that peak employee shift, that facility has twenty-two beds and thirteen staff members during their peak weekday shift. And what we did was we utilized the maximum parking demand on the site to come up with a ratio of parking spaces per staff member. Why we did that rather than parking spaces per bed is because the driving force for these facilities as as far as parking is related, is staff members. I'll just reiterate, patients of the facility are not allowed to drive, they're not allowed to have a car. Guest visits are encouraged to be virtual, there's very few guests actually visiting the site. Obviously, you have the occasional pickup and drop-off for when somebody's coming to the site or when they need to be picked up from the site. But again, the driving factor and the majority of parked vehicles on the site is actually the staff members. So we calculated a parking ratio of one point three eight parking spaces per staff member at the existing Boca Recovery Center in Galway. We use that parking ratio to calculate what the demand of this site would be. Again, we're we're larger than the or the existing facility. So that one point three eight with thirty-eight staff members comes out to a parking demand of fifty-three parking spaces. So I I think that kind of plays well with the the fact there's thirty-eight staff members, maybe an additional couple for pickups and drop-offs, maybe there's a delivery car on site, maybe a visitor too. But again, the majority of people who are parking on this site are actually just the staff members, they turn over. I think as was just testified to, the peak shift is thirty-eight, the next shift is twenty. So we have sixty physical parking spaces on site. During every turnover of staff, there's enough parking with that sixty spaces to turn. To turn over from thirty-eight staff members to twenty staff members, even if they all left and came to the site at the same time. Again, I, I think that's why we feel co- very comfortable with the sixty parking space that exists on site. There's obviously, um, the, the opportunity for the twenty bank spaces if they were necessary. But I think when you look at the number of staff on the site, when you look at the, the research we've done at a, at a facility that's owned and operated by the same applicant. It has very similar operations, um, and then just simply looking at the ordinance, we, we meet the parking requirement with the bank spaces. We believe based on our real world research that the sixty physical parking spaces on the site today. Are more than sufficient.
I just wanted. The, the I T standard that you mentioned, obviously, where it's somewhat of a disadvantage here, that there are not specific I T E numbers, that's Institute of Transportation Engineer. Um, the generally accepted treatise in your field, there's not specific numbers for the proposed. Uh, alcohol and drug rehabilitation facility, using comparable uses of, did you take a look at? Something comparable to what we're proposing, what the parking demands would be?
We did, and, um, that most comparable land use would be nursing home, it's land use six twenty. And just to, to kind of rattle off some of the similarities, they provide descriptions of each land use within the I T E. Some of the things that are mentioned for nursing home is skilled nurses or nursing aides that are present twenty-four hours per day. That's very similar to our facility, again, there'd be staff on site, you have your peak thirty-eight. Then the next shift would have twenty staff and then slightly less, but it's a twenty-four hour day operation where staff is on site. The other, um, aspect of the description of nursing home that I think plays into this is a nursing home resident is not capable of operating a vehicle. While not exactly similar that, um. Patients of this facility are, are, could be capable of operating a vehicle, they're not allowed to have a vehicle on the site. So no patient within the facility is even allowed to have a vehicle here. So I think that those, those two things kind of make nursing home the most comparable use. Um, when looking at the parking rates for, um, that land use within the I T E. Uh, they do, or they have a requirement of point four spaces per bed, that comes out to forty-one parking spaces.
So, in your opinion, looking at both the municipality of Princeton zoning ordinance, the I T standards for a comparable use. And the real world parking demands for a, the same use, albeit a smaller size. All of which support your conclusion that this site with sixty parking spaces is more than sufficient to meet the anticipated parking demands.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, I have no further questions for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
I have one question, um, so you're saying basically. You have twenty-two. I'm getting confused with all of them, was twenty-two beds in the other facility, and you had thirteen spaces?
We had twenty-two beds, I apologize, I know there was a lot of numbers, there's twenty-two beds in the other facility. Thirteen staff members at peak shift, and the peak parking demand we found was eighteen spaces. So that's where we got that ratio of spaces to staff members, there was eighteen parked cars and thirteen staff members.
Eighteen, eighteen to twenty-two. Is that the ratio, we're looking at eighteen cars for twenty-two? Staff and whatever.
Eighteen to thirteen.
But twenty-two is the bed count, and I think twenty-two, the bed count's not. It, it's not a great driver of the parking demands here, because again, the individuals in these beds don't have vehicles. What, what instead we're looking at is the employee demands, how many employees need to be on site at any given time? Because that is largely going to be what drives the parking demands for these sites, so. And, and Nicholas, if you can, can you just give those numbers again, the max employee numbers and then the parking demand associated with it?
Yeah, so the max parking demand we found during our counts was eighteen parked cars. There's thirteen staff members at peak time at the existing, um, facility we studied. That comes out to a parking ratio of one point three eight cars per staff member.
And using that with the proposal, what do you, what do you, what's the result?
So using that one point three eight spaces per staff member with thirty-eight staff members, that comes out to fifty-three parking spaces.
Sixty available.
Sixty physical spaces are available, yes.
Okay, that answers my question. Uh, board members, any additional question?
I have a few questions.
Oh yeah, actually, is that Justin?
Yes, it is, yep.
Let me, let me ask you a question first. Are you, I, I assume you're familiar, familiar with the I T E?
Not as much as a traffic engineer would be, but yes, generally.
So what they're stating in their assumption is that reasonable? Based on what you understand, the, the I T standards, would you can, would you compare it to the same thing?
Uh, well, I actually had a few questions about that before I answer that question, um, though I will say the general protocol for. You know, most applications before the planning board and the zoning board, is that we have our excellent, um, traffic engineer. Uh, review these, uh, numbers for applications, so. You know, having me comment on it is, uh, admittedly like having, uh, you know, not an expert comment on it, let me just put it that way.
You're being difficult, man, okay. Um, okay, alright.
Thank you, well, I, I guess my first question that just popped up is, who are those other five cars? So if it's thirteen staff members, eighteen cars, do we know who those other five cars are?
We just conduct counts and count how many cars are on site, all day it fluctuated between, I think thirteen and eighteen. So it, it could be a number of things, it could be staff switching over, it could be a, a pickup or a drop off, even a delivery, so. While we don't know who the actual, who was in the actual five other cars. Um, it, it could be, sorry, it, it could be any number of things. Or any number of, um, drivers, I suppose.
Got it, okay. I guess just to follow up on that, kind of, uh, off of Mr. Cohen's question. Is it usual, you know, I, I don't know the fraction of five over thirteen, but is it usual to? Have what seems like a high proportion that, that is kind of unclear of who it is? You know, if you extrapolated that to, I don't know, a hundred and thirty, obviously, that'd be fifty cars that were unaccounted for, that number seems off to me.
And, and I just want to add too, and Nick, I'll, I'll let you jump in here, is obviously that is the highest, the peak demand here. If, if you look in the report, um, throughout the day. That number went down, this eighteen is us trying to capture, the busiest this parking lot gets throughout the day is those eighteen cars. And I think if you look at throughout the day, it's actually much closer to that thirteen number, and Nick, and not, not to steal your thunder, but is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, and ye- yes, I would say it's usual, again, a, any number of, um. Things could account for the few extra vehicles on the site. We even count if there's a FedEx or a UPS parked in a parking spot, we count that as a parked vehicle, so. Really anything between, again, staff shift or deliveries or pickup and drop off, or even a guest or two visiting in the site. That's what could account for that extra eight or extra five vehicles. Um, I would say when doing parking studies like this, you're never gonna have an exact parking, um, demand throughout the entire day. So, you know, going to this site, we don't expect thirteen cars to be parked in that parking lot throughout the entire day, just because there's thirteen staff members. There's obviously other factors and at play, and I think that's why we applied the ratio to our parking or our, um, staff count. Because again, there's, there's, we don't just need thirty-eight parking spaces, there's a number of other things and reasons that people might park on the site. So that's why we applied that ratio to our parking.
Okay, thank you, and, and my apologies if you did cover it in the report, uh, I haven't gotten a chance to review that, uh. That we received it two Fridays ago. Um, my next question, just from a quick Google search, it appears that there's a sheltered NJ Transit bus stop directly in front of that facility. Um, how did you factor that into the data?
We didn't factor in any, um. Any staff members or, um, you know, I guess really anybody coming to the site. Utilizing anything other than their own singular passenger vehicle. So obviously, somebody who uses the bus or Ubers or Carpools, that would drive down the parking demand. We didn't take that into account, we wanted to account for what would be the highest parking demand on the site, and I think that's what we did within our report. Again, other factors like Ubers and buses and things like that would drive down the parking demand. We accounted for every single staff member driving their own personal vehicle.
But presumably, someone could arrive at that facility in Galloway on the bus, and they can't do that up here on Bun Drive. I guess that's not a question, that's just kind of a statement. Uh, and I guess, uh, just my final question is, so you mentioned in the I T E manual. That, uh, the nursing home is the most comparable land use to the drug and alcohol, uh, uh, rehabilitation. So by definition, would you agree that those are two separate uses?
No, I would say the I T doesn't have a land use for drug and alcohol, uh, rehab facility. And i- in that situation, you look to the most comparable use, which again is nursing home, I think there's a lot of similarities between these two. Um, I'm not a planner, I will just go based on the, the traffic and parking aspects of it. But it's patients who don't have a car, who don't drive to the site, who do, who don't, you know. Come to and from the site frequently, um, and, and I think, you know, it's the twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven. Um, staff being on site, which makes these two uses extremely comparable from a, from a traffic perspective.
Got it, thank you.
This, all these. Numbers here, your eighteen and thirteen, this takes into consideration. That shift change time. That we started out talking about a while ago.
Yes, it does, our counts were from ten AM to five PM, so that three thirty to four o'clock shift time was captured in those counts.
Alright, we're, okay, Michael?
Yeah, it's a question for Justin, actually, um, regarding this, this count. Are you? Are you okay with it being a one-day survey? I've seen.
Yeah.
More extensive studies.
Mm-hmm, I, I think we generally see more than one day, because you never know, you know, is that day, uh? Christmas Eve, is it Fourth of July, is it, you know, the, the, is it closed that day? Um, I, I don't know those things, and like I said, I haven't read that report because we just got it.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I, I just wondered, I, I was surprised to see a one-day study.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Floyd, if I can, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Kennedy jump in as well, is in this situation, when, when you're looking at these numbers and the site is. If it was close, I think additional days were to have been done here, but essentially this site in, in Galloway was overparked in addition to. Analysis under the I T E standards to show the site's overparked, in addition to compliance with the ordinance requirement. So I think when you look at these three factors together, that weighs into the consideration as to whether additional parking studies are required. Or whether this is something that really, three different metrics here, what we are proposing is adequate to meet the anticipated demand, is that fair, Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I agree with all that, and I'll, I'll just say one more thing. I, I, I very much understand studying multiple days, I think in certain situations, it's, it's definitely applicable. When you look at a car wash Saturday morning or Sunday morning, isn't going to be the same as a, a Tuesday morning. When you look at other types of land uses, yes, I, I one hundred percent agree that multiple days of studies and data is applicable. When you look at a facility like this, it, it's very structured, patients are here for weeks at a time. Staff members are, it's the same staff count every day, um, of the week, obviously different throughout the time periods of the day. But this is a very structured, um, facility where the parking demand isn't going to fluctuate too much day to day. Might fluctuate hour to hour, because the overnight has less staff, and, you know, the weekday has more. But when you, when you look at day to day, this is a, an operation that runs very similar every single day.
Rolling admissions and discharges.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I said, are there, there are rolling admissions and discharges, you, people will come and go, they could come and go on a. Saturday or Sunday or Tuesday, there's no specific day for intake or discharge.
I, I, I fully understand that.
Stand it, what's the answer to that?
The question is, though, the. Discharge and people entering the facility, that's rolling, there's no specific day, it's not like, say, a hotel where everyone comes in on Saturday.
So it could be any day of the week.
Oh, I, I apologize, I thought you were making a statement, yes, it, 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 it's could be any day of the week, yes.
Okay, so. It's okay. Any other questions, board members, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Dave, I think Mr. Dan Weisman has.
Sure, please.
Thank you, um, Mr. Kennedy, uh, when preparing, uh, studies for sites that don't necessarily have a, a land use code in the I T E. Um, we've already discussed, uh, you know, if it's, if it's one day, is it, is it typical that you would just study one site? Um, and would you, uh, when preparing, not specifically for this, but for, for other reports that you've prepared, um. Would scaling play into this at all, I mean, it's, it's a hundred and two-bed. Proposed facility versus a twenty-two-bed facility, so when you, when, when reviewing these, I, I, you know, I, I would think that you would look for something that would be a little more. Comparable size-wise, um, I just wanted to know, when you prepare this, what, what factors into that?
So, so I think the main factor is that the, the operator is the same. Here as it is at the proposed facility. Um, we, we obviously understand all the operations at the existing facility that we studied, and then the proposed facility. And I think it gives a better comparison, although our proposed site is larger, it gives a comparison. With similar hours, with similar staff needs, with similar, um, patient type. And the operations that, excuse me, occur at the existing facility are gonna occur similar at the proposed facility. Again, I think we looked to, um, study a site that was similar in that regard, and then. Obviously compare based on the staff members, I understand that the proposed facility has more beds. Um, one oh two compared to twenty-two, when you look at the staff members, it's thirty-eight compared to thirteen. Obviously, a, a much smaller gap than the difference in bed type, and I think using our, our ratio, our parking ratio here, um. It is very reasonable to estimate the parking demand of, of the proposed facility.
Okay, um, and then just a question for, uh, actually Dr. Tarlo. Um, I understand Boca has multiple, multiple facilities, uh, across a couple of different states, are there any facilities, uh? That Boca has that are similar in scale to the one proposed here?
Yes, we have a facility in Massachusetts that is zoned for, um, I believe a hundred and twenty-eight beds. Um, that just recently opened several weeks ago, so we're still currently, um, ramping up the census, so we were opening it like. Several wings at a time, so we are not yet at that number of, uh, patients, but that is a facility that we have that is. Going to be larger, a hundred and twenty-four-bed facility. Three floors.
Is there a specific reason that facility wasn't studied, instead, it seems like that's a little more comparable in scale?
I, I can answer that, I think Dr. Tarlo was just saying it's, it's not fully opened yet.
Correct.
Okay, so. And do you know how much parking is provided for that facility?
I don't know off the top of my head, Dr. Tarlo, I'm not sure if you.
And Mr. Weisman, if I could, I think. I don't know the regulations in Massachusetts for these types of facilities, and that's largely what's driving the employee numbers. So while it may be helpful in a sense to have that information, I, I would say that. It, it may not really give us the answer I think you're looking for, because the number of employees that are required, it's provided. By the regulations that are promulgated by the state here, it, it's not, these two uses are not comparable in that sense, because it is such a heavily regulated field.
Understandable, thank you.
Nice to know that, well, that was a good question. Alright, so.
Uh, can I just jump in on that, though, uh, Chairman? I mean, parking regulations are not really by state, they're by municipality, so I think that argument that you just made could, you know, be the same between Galloway and Princeton.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I understand.
I, I, I can jump in, I think I understand, I think what, um. Mr. Larry are saying is that the staff members themselves and the regulations on how many staff you need per patients and beds. That's different between Massachusetts and New Jersey, and that's a driving factor of how many staff members you need. Um, you know, parking on site, that, that could be similar between the two, but the actual amount of staff members you need is what's going to be different.
Got it, understood.
You were making an assumption on, on an actual situation where you had a certain number of staff and a certain number of spaces. So the comparison would be a good one. Regardless of what the. regardless of what the ordinance is. I mean, at least to see what it is, but you really couldn't do that with a facility that's open for weeks.
Exactly.
Dave, I see the board's traffic engineer, he has his hand raised, so I think that means he's got a question.
Oh, please speak.
And our traffic engineer, there we go. Uh, we'll swear you again for tonight, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
Uh, the question I have for for Nick ones is, uh, on the parking rates that you obtained from the other side. I know the rates that you calculated is based on uh, the occupied spaces versus number of staff, correct?
Correct.
Did you calculate the rate for the parking supply for that site versus the number of staff? So, how many, how many parking spaces did they have available in that site?
Make double check to make sure. Thirty-seven.
Okay, so wha- what is the ratio of that space parking space, uh, supply to, uh, employees?
That ratio would be two point eight parking spaces available, I just want to make sure that's clear, parking spaces available per peak employee.
Okay, so if we apply that to the proposed site, what are we looking at in terms of supply?
Uh, I could calculate the numbers, but I, I think we're looking at a site that we studied, the existing site, that is certainly overparked throughout the entire day, not half the parking office utilized. Um, applying that ratio, it comes to a hundred and eight parking spaces for thirty-eight staff members, but again, I, I think what's much more important is counting the actual vehicles on the site. Um, obviously, I none of us were part of the approval for that site, or what their requirements would be. But when looking at this from a traffic and parking standpoint, you want to get an understanding of how many cars were actually parked on site, rather than the supply, because that might mean that, you know, the site is overparked, which I think that one is.
And, and your goal in obviously preparing this report is to match, obviously being conformity with the ordinance requirements, but at the same time, match the proposed number of parking spaces to what you believe to be the realistic demand of this proposed use, correct? You, you don't want to create more impervious coverage, more parking spaces than are needed for this type of use, correct?
Exactly, I think as designers and engineers, we look to not overdevelop a site or overdesign a site. Constructing eighty parking spaces where only fifty of them are going to be used would be an example of overdesigning a site. Um, I think, you know, the numbers we looked at and everything we've went through, um, I, I think sixty physical parking spaces is more than enough, and then obviously twenty bank spaces if needed. But again, I think all the numbers show that sixty is, is certainly enough for the site.
So you're, so you're proposing sixty spaces and banking twenty?
Sixty physical spaces banking twenties for a total of eighty.
For a total of eighty.
And that would be consistent with what was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine.
Okay. And, and what, what, what would be your mechanism to unbank the banked spaces?
So pursuant to the terms of that resolution, we'd have to go back before the board.
Okay. That's all I have.
Hey, thank you. Board members, any other questions? Okay, um, Mr. Lario, you want to continue?
Yep, we have one more witness, Mr. Janow, our planner. Mr. Janow, I'm just, yep, there you are. So I know you were here last month, you were sworn in, accepted as an expert in professional planning. So I, I think before we get started, there was a question as to the units, the beds. I did my best to explain it, is there anything that needs, need, needs to be added as to your interpretation of that provision?
No, uh, quite frankly, the, the calculation is fairly simple. Um, a unit is defined within your ordinance as a room which accommodates patients, and a unit can have one or two beds. Uh, and the ordinance reads that it would be the maximum of one hundred and twenty units or two hundred and forty beds, or thirty beds per acre. This site is about six point seven acres, uh, which would permit, uh, roughly a hundred and eighty beds. We're under that, so we comply with what the limitation on occupancy would be pursuant to the ordinance.
Okay, and then obviously with the amendment to the total number of beds to one oh two, we're further reducing
Further reducing, correct.
Okay, so, and I, I won't make you go through the conditional use standards again for this site, but my understanding is right now the only deviation is, remains this licensing requirement.
That's correct, my, in my report that was submitted, in my testimony, we went through point by point the conditional standards. The only thing that is not a one hundred percent ex- exact match is the license number, it is licensed by the same agency, there's a distinction in the license number, because it's not a nursing home, it's a rehabilitation facility, it's under the same guidance of, uh, the Department of Health, uh, but that is the only, call it subtle distinction in the conditional use standards.
Okay, and as briefed in, in your submissions to the board, that alone, that distinction in the class of individuals served and the licensing requirements can't serve as a basis to, to deviate these two uses to, um, find that these are two separate uses, correct?
That's right, the, uh, the analysis, uh, included, uh, a review of case law related to the, uh, to the matter, and the conclusion was, and Servo being the critical case that we cited, uh, that essentially the use functions uh, identically to a hospital or to a nursing home, and the conclusion is that there cannot be a distinction, uh, between the uses from a land use perspective.
And that's because they are functionally the same or equivalent uses.
I believe, uh, the quote was, it is also held that nursing homes, hospitals are uses that are so similar physically and functionally that the disparate classification for zoning purposes cannot be justified.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have for Mr. Janow.
Just, just to say it one more time, so the, the limitation on the number of beds is a hundred and two.
That's the proposal, the limitation would be.
No, the proposal you're coming before us with is a hundred and two beds.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want. Okay, thank you, all right, I'm sorry, Mr. Lario.
No, no problem at all, Mr. Chairman, those are all the questions I have for Mr. Janow.
I have a question. I have a question, Steve. Uh, to the planner, how many units are there in this building?
So under the prior approval, just bear with me, I believe there were I believe it was a hundred and nineteen beds. But those were a mix of one and two bedroom units. So I don't know exactly how many units there were, but I believe the prior approval was for, uh, just bear with me, I have the, uh, resolution here. One hundred and nineteen beds.
Have any idea how many, you, you, you don't have any idea how many ones and how many twos?
I do not off the top of my head, no, and I do not have the, uh, architectural plan.
Well, when you were at a hundred and forty-two, I assume that was two people per room.
Yes, one forty-eight was two people per room, and that's, that's specifically as part of the clinical treatment, it's, it's that having them together is, is part of the, the, the treatment.
I understand that, so, so what do you, what's your change in your plan that makes makes it now a hundred and two?
We're trying to, to, from a parking standpoint, we want to make sure that what we're proposing is fully compliant with the, the parking requirements with the sixty spaces.
Okay, then my question to Derek, I guess, is what happens if they want to start filling up the rooms with two people after they get permission?
I don't know, it's not like there's a site plan in a resolution that lays out the, uh, conditions of approval, I guess I would ask Karen, um.
Can, can I speak to that question, I, I can answer that. Um, we would agree as a condition of approval to provide any license issued by the state, and that state, that license issued will have the bed count on it, and obviously, we won't be able to deviate from what we're licensed to have, and we'll agree to that as a condition of any approval to provide that.
What do you, just, this is a I mean, what do you, what do you do with unused rooms, just block them?
Storage.
You won't be moving people around, it's fine, I understand, that's a tough one. You have rooms that could service bedrooms, but you're not going to use them, that's fine.
And, and I will say too, in addition to the licensing referencing a hundred and two beds, we are subject to frequent inspections by the Department of Health as well. So a- as I keep saying, it's a heavily regulated industry here, that we're going to be bound by the representations we make both to this board and to the state.
All right. Are you done, Mr. Lario?
I am, Mr. Chairman. I, I would just ask for a brief period to summarize, uh, following public comment.
All right, board members, any questions to Mr. Lario? Or any other witnesses so far?
Uh, Mr. Cohen, uh, just one thing, I, I'm just looking through the findings of fact from nineteen ninety-nine, and it says uh, a hundred and nineteen units, a hundred and twenty beds.
A hundred and nineteen rooms, twenty, a hundred and twenty beds?
That's correct, that's what it says in the finding, or a hundred and twenty units, a hundred and nineteen beds. So presumably, a hundred and nineteen one-bed units, and then one more that is potentially a live-in, uh, a maintenance person or a doctor or something like that.
All right, uh, board members, no questions in Mr. Lario. Mr. Lario, if you were going to go into, before we go into public comment, if you'd like to sum up.
Mr. Chairman, uh, respectfully, I'd appreciate the opportunity to summarize after public comment, just because it would give me an opportunity to address any comments or concerns that are raised by members of the public during that public comment portion.
You have, you have the ability to comment before and after.
So, then I'll reserve it to, to comment after.
Okay, good, all right, so at this point, we'll open it up to the public for any comments, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on behalf of this obli- application, uh, indicate that by raising your hands. Claudia, can you monitor that, let us know if there's anyone that wants to speak?
There are no hands. Oh, one second.
Anybody out there, Claudia?
Somebody was brought over, but I don't see him. There was one person with a hand up.
Yeah, Paul, Mr. Paul Race.
Where is he? I don't. There he is.
Uh, uh, good evening, board members, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, I am a, um, um, I am a.
Mr. Race, but before you continue, we just need to swear you in, do you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? And are you comfortable giving us your address, or you just want to indicate that you live in Princeton?
No, I live in, I, um, but, uh, yes, I, I agree to provide, uh, truthful testimony first. Um, and secondly, my, my address is twenty-five Campbell Woods Way, and, uh, I'm in the community adjacent to the, uh, uh, to the, uh, the facility, and, um, yeah, I'm also a, uh, just full disclosure, I'm also a board member of the H O A, I'm uh, Secretary of the Board, I'm not speaking for the board, um, I'm just speaking on behalf of, you know, my, you know, myself. Uh, but I did, I, you know, I wanted to thank, uh, the, uh, the board member, uh, Board Member Deanna, I believe is her name, for raising the que- uh, the concerns of the, uh, the, uh, you know, the community, and, uh, and I, and I, you know, I, I have the same, uh, concerns about security, safety, um, as well as, um, you know, I, I respectfully disagree that, um, that it's a similar, you know, that the, the facilities are similar in, in any, any way. Um, uh, there, there is a, a, you know, I, I, you know, a, a distinct possibility of there being a, a lot, a lot different kind of activity going on, uh, at the, uh, facility, so I just wanted to state that, and again, uh, state that there are, are, you know, the community does have concerns about, uh, uh, safety, and I don't think the, um, uh, the applicant has, has sufficiently provided enough evidence that there is going to be a, uh, security and provide a sa- a safe environment, uh, for the surrounding community.
Thank you. Any other, do you have any other comments, or is that your testimony?
That was it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. Claudia, anyone else want to speak?
No, no more hands.
Okay, um, seeing no one else that wants to speak, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. Mr. Lario, I know you want to sum up, but can you just address the comments of Mr. Race?
Sure, and, and again, I, I would say that as Dr. Tarlo mentioned, both tonight and last month, um, this is a facility that will have twenty-four seven supervision of all residents in there. Um, but I think it's an important distinction to make here, is that everyone there, I think as Dr. Tarlo said very succinctly, is there under their own free will, they're there to get better, they're there to receive medical treatment. So I think that this concern as to security, um, this is, isn't a situation where you're going to have people who are, are trying to get out of there, because they want to be there. And I always ask Dr. Tarlo in these types of applications, how frequently is that an issue? And the answer is always, it's not, it is not frequently an issue, and the reason is simply because the people there are trying to get treatment. With that all being said, there are requirements for operating these facilities, and the biggest one is twenty-four seven medical supervision. This is not a, a situation, this is not a site where these individuals will be able to come and go as they please. They will be monitored, and there are protocols in place to address the very situation that was just discussed about someone wanting to leave. They have practice in place, they've been successful, and they'll be successful here.
All right, if you want to, uh, sum up now?
Sure, ju- just briefly, a- and again, I appreciate the board, your time and attention, I know there's been a lot of testimony put on the record, both last month and this month's hearing. Ultimately, what we are seeking is approval to operate a licensed subacute non-hospital-based detox and re- residential rehabilitation facility at the subject site. We're proposing to operate that within a building that was purpose-built for a nursing rehabilitation center. Both, as you've heard testimony, um, throughout both nights, both are licensed healthcare facilities under the New Jersey Department of Health and under the Healthcare Planning Act. Um, both provide twenty-four seven residential care in an institutional setting. Um, they are functionally equivalent uses, and again, this is not my opinion, this is what New Jersey courts have continuously looked at, these nursing homes, hospitals, and residential facilities. They've looked at them as functional equivalencies. Now, I know the, the applicant, that the conversation is, well, the applicant should seek D three use variance relief here, given that there's a discrepancy in the licensing section provided under the New Jersey regulations. I think I spoke earlier to the three reasons why we are not comfortable with seeking that relief, and I think that, obviously legally, we don't feel we have to. Two, it's a heavier burden, and three, it opens us up to potential challenges down the road. What we feel is, when you look at what we are proposing here, from an operational standpoint, from a functional standpoint, they are the same, and any distinction that is predicated upon that licensing requirement must be rejected. There was a concern as to parking race at the last meeting. I believe that the testimony of Mr. Kennedy conclusively determines that the parking, the sixty parking spaces that exist on site will be adequate to meet the anticipated demand, more than adequate. And again, that's based upon both your ordinance requirements, it's based upon his analysis of I T E standards for similar uses, nursing home uses, and I do think it's notable that when he went through the characteristics of a nursing home under the I T E standards, it was remarkably similar to what we are proposing here, both under the I T E standards and the analysis of the facility in Galloway. Now, now, again, albeit that that is a smaller facility, I think it gives you an idea as to the employee demands and the parking demands corresponding to it. All three of those analyses show that the sixty parking spaces will be adequate to meet the required demand here. Um, w- we feel very comfortable in, in Mr. Kennedy's professional opinion that this site will be able to function that it is properly parked, um, and there won't be a parking. and there won't be a parking issue going forward. Ultimately, the applicant's proposing to use this building as it was designed, as a healthcare facility for those in need. As we've discussed at length, we are talking about disabled individuals. There are certain protections here. It is important that this board keeps those protections in mind, both under the ADA and the Federal Fair Housing Act. Your requirement under that law is to make reasonable accommodations for these disabled individuals. We feel that what we are asking for is wholly supported by the law, but that obligation remains. And what we are seeking is a favorable interpretation and overturn of the zoning officer's determination, allowing a zoning permit to be issued for this site and determination that the parking is adequate to satisfy the need here. If there's any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them. And again, I appreciate every board member's time and attention here tonight and at the previous meeting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Before we, excuse you here, to Mr. Reese's question, and I think you did answer this before, if somebody decides to go for a walk, you're going to have a staff member with them, I mean, tracking them.
So it's a two-part answer. One, walk, anyone who wants to go for a walk cannot leave the property. Flat out, they are restricted, they can't leave the property. Two, if they seek to get fresh air in a designated area on-site, they will have a staff member with them at all times.
But off-site, they can't be off-site?
No, not with or without a staff member. They are not permitted to be off-site.
Your staff will, if someone chooses to attempt that, your staff member stays with them?
Correct. And there's protocols in place to bring them back and to discuss, if they no longer want to be a patient at the facility, they work with them to figure out a way for them to be picked up and taken out of the facility.
The no conditions is your staff going to abandon someone who's wandered away?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, board members, we heard a lot of information, a lot of testimony, a lot of numbers. We have Mr. Bridges' original determination. And we've heard testimony with regard to parking. We'll go into executive session now and try to make a determination. So, someone want to start? I think the, I'll start with parking. I guess what I've heard, it appears, based on what we've heard, the testimony we've heard, that parking should not be an issue. In a sense, it will be easier to track if we find that there's not enough parking. The applicant is going to be required to come back to us. And if that means, and Mr. Bridger, correct me if I'm wrong, if that means that a site plan would be necessary, they would have to do that. If we find that cars are, you know, exceeding the capacity of the available parking, they would have to come back to us. It would be painful for them, but they'd have to do it.
Yes, sir.
Board members?
Yeah, it sounds as though there should be sufficient parking, but I feel that there were plenty of questions still coming from municipal staff about the information being presented. But, you know, I don't, I don't know if the staff will feel that confident in it. But I agree the procedure for remedying, if they find that there's a shortfall, that there is a procedure to remedy that.
Right now, they do, and correct me if I'm wrong, right now, they're saying they have 38 staff at their maximum and that considers overlap at shift changes and there are 60 spaces currently available on-site. Okay, thank you. Any other comments for them?
Board members, maybe it helps to sort of take a look at your alternatives tonight. The applicant has argued that Mr. Bridger's interpretation was incorrect. His interpretation being that although the uses he finds similar, that the applicant cannot meet really the only conditional use standard for a nursing home, which is the license. And they can't meet it because they acknowledge they're not a nursing home. They're a substance abuse facility with similar, similar goals. So their position is they should not need any variance, nor do they need site plan. That what they're doing is simply continuing a nursing home use that was approved back in 1999. Mr. Bridger's position, and Derek, you need to correct me if I'm wrong, if I misspeak. Mr. Bridger's position is that yes, the uses are similar, but he feels that they need a variance from the conditional use standard for a nursing home, which is the nursing home license. Mr. Bridger originally also took the position that they needed a site plan. I don't know if Mr. Bridger and staff still feel that way. So we think we need a clarification on that. If staff feels now that, having heard the testimony, a site plan should still be submitted.
Two questions from Mr. Bridger, anything to say?
I think the parking is very tight, you know, 38 max employees at the top shift. The next shift change is 28. That's two space variants, you know, of... So I'm a little concerned about the parking, but that site improvement's not proposed at this time. There aren't any site improvements proposed. I think the the number of beds has been reduced. They've had a pretty robust discussion on the number of staffing to accommodate those people. We've had a discussion about security and safety. So, and I think most of the site plan questions have been addressed at this point.
The question on the license, is that, is that just a technical question? That this is not a nursing home, so they can't be licensed as a nursing home? And that's what the standard says?
I think my hands are tied. It calls that you have that license. It's explicit. It specifically calls out that license to be part of the conditional use criteria.
Nursing home license.
I do understand Mr. Lario's argument that there are concern that if they were to get approval from the board in the form of a D3 variance, which is, which is just, it's relief from conditional use standards that can't be met. He's indicated his concern that they may be challenged legally or more vulnerable to a challenge. I think there's two ways of looking at that. There's certainly also grants for challenge. If the interpretation is, this is identical to a nursing home, that also opens up an avenue for challenge. But tonight, I mean, the issue for the board is, what, what is your finding? What, what do you think?
I have a question, Karen. So we, we as a board can make a determination that we wouldn't require a nursing home license?
Well, it's not so much, it's not that you wouldn't require a nursing home license. They can't get a nursing home license. They're not a nursing home. So what you'd be doing is, is saying, we understand, we do find you are similar and we're going to give you relief from that condition because you are a use that is very similar to nursing homes. Is it the same? Well, no. The state says no because it has a different license. So that, that's what you would be doing if you...
You're saying we can grant that relief?
I think you can, yes.
Other question?
Yeah, I guess I didn't quite get the end of your questioning, Steve. We can grant that relief of what? What are you saying?
Grant the relief from the requirement of a nursing home license.
Then, then that is, in my opinion, essentially saying you don't have to follow the zoning code regarding the zoning officer's decision. Granting variances is a whole different thing to me. And I'm not saying not to do it or to do it. But did he correctly interpret the local zoning code? I said it. Regardless of what the state says, when you look at the variance side, you can take into, well, you can do it anytime, but take into consideration the state. But I think the appeal is, the decision of the zoning officer is straightforward. It's not, it's not supposed to be based on the state. Okay? Another thing, I think essentially, that would be if we rule against Derek's opinion, we're basically saying the zoning code is wrong. And all ORs that don't have something more than assisted living in nursing homes are wrong. That is not, at least as a zoning board member, my place to do. The town can very easily change it. But regarding the appeal of whether Derek read the zoning code correctly and the stipulation is in there, to me is cut and dry.
I agree 100%. It says nursing home license, says nursing home license. It doesn't say if, and or anything else, and they can't do that.
And people can vote to deny the appeal. And if they want to still vote, I understand the applicant doesn't really want to go through the variances, but still vote to give them variances.
Michael, your position is, what you're proposing is that, or your position is that...
Let's not, let's not mention, my position is, I would recommend denying the appeal, that would be the first vote, and then move on, you know, to variances. We've, we've heard the argument for that.
I think the whole, I agree with Michael 100%.
I think it's as clear as can be.
Yeah, I think the reason why we have variances is for these various situations. Otherwise, we've had other applicants come before us and we've said, no, we can't do this because the law explicitly says we can't do it. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to say, oh, well, wait a minute. Now, we're going to fudge it a little bit. I don't think we can do that. I think Michael's 100% right on this one.
I agree with that. That was my, in a sense, my question to Karen. Does this board have the ability to do that? Basically, you're saying, yes, but it's a two-part procedure. The first procedure is to deny the, or affirm Derek's interpretation. And the second one is then to discuss a variance from that interpretation.
And, and I believe what you've heard tonight is that, well, I'm not sure that that's been totally resolved, but what I'm hearing is that, based on the testimony presented by the applicant, a site plan is not needed. Meaning they've presented parking testimony. If the board were to follow this path and decide to grant a variance from that requirement of a nursing home license, finding that the uses are very similar, they, you would not be requiring the applicant to provide a site plan. Because remember, Derek's finding was twofold. He said, no, you need conditional use authorization, they need a site plan. Now, he made that determination a couple of months ago when the applicant had not provided information. But I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify then what...
There's a number of different, I agree with you. There are a number of different questions. But, and Michael's right, but the issue now is, so we have, we have a number of things we need to consider and vote on. It's not one vote. So...
I'd like to focus a little bit on what Michael said, and that is, since the possibility of litigation has been raised, if we overturn Mr. Bridger's determination, if we, if we don't, if we do overturn his interpretation and go with that of the applicant, I assume that some neighbor would have a very good case, or at least a case, to go against that decision.
Any neighbor going to appeal anything?
Yeah, I mean, people can't appeal everything, anything. And the, you heard a neighbor raise questions at the first hearing. You've heard a neighbor raise some questions tonight and the applicant has provided testimony and response. So if...
I guess what I'm saying is there's, there's legal exposure either way we do it.
It sounds that way. But I think, I think Michael's right. We have a, we have to break this approval or denial up into pieces. And again, Karen brings up the parking as well. That adds another level to it.
Well, I mean, the parking is an aspect of site plan approval. So that's why I was asking, setting aside for the moment the issue of the comparability of the uses and whether a variance from the conditional use requirement for a nursing home license, setting that aside for a moment, there's the other issue of site plan. Is site plan needed? Does the board feel they have heard adequate testimony? Derek's told you, well, parking is tight, but no site improvements are being proposed now. If the applicant determines that they need those bank spaces, they've acknowledged they have to come back to the board, to the board of jurisdiction for site plan approval. So now, you need to weigh what you've heard and if you're, if you're saying you want your first step to be, do you affirm Mr. Bridger's determination? That's one way you could proceed. It's primarily though, I guess, with respect to the need for a variance from the check, variance from the need for a nursing home license. And then you've got the second part of his determination, which was site plan, which at this point, he's indicated he doesn't think it's necessary. So if you, if you want to begin with that, if somebody has a motion to make, I don't know if you want to make these motions.
There's the third part. The third part is if we make the determination that to affirm Mr. Bridger's determination, his interpretation, then the third part would be, do we discuss a variance from that?
Correct.
Is that right?
Absolutely correct.
So there are three pieces to this puzzle. Okay. Alright, board members, somebody want to...
And I guess for that third piece, if the board decides to affirm Mr. Bridger's interpretation, if you are unwilling to grant that relief, meaning they can't produce a nursing home license, they're not a nursing home. I think you would need to really explain why, what are you doing that? Are you telling them they can't operate this at all? Are you saying they should actually file now a conditional use application and come back to the board? Which, given the amount of testimony that's been presented over two nights... Which, given the amount of testimony that's been presented over two nights, that doesn't seem to make any sense. So it's before you now. So I just want to clarify that, that if that is something that some board members are thinking that they feel that there should actually be an application filed that says conditional use, I don't, I don't know what that would accomplish.
That would, that came up in the discussion of what information would be in that other application that hadn't been presented already. So I think, I think we discussed that.
Right.
So basically, somebody has to outline these and then we'll take votes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a procedural issue. I know you're in a session, but can I speak to just a procedural issue quickly as to the vote? I understand and I agree with the order that first the question as to the appeal needs to be determined and then it would proceed to the D three variance. My concern is twofold. One, the notice that was provided for this meeting did not specifically include reference to a D three variance. In addition, planning testimony in support of that D three relief, while I believe there is ample evidence, has not been officially provided into the record. And obviously, when you're talking about the D three with the five out of seven affirmative votes that are required, the heightened burden, it is the applicant's responsibility to make sure the record is as clean as possible in case there is a potential appeal. So I, I would say, and again, if the board is inclined to do that vote tonight, I'll, I'll have to talk to my client, but initially our, our reaction is there is a lot of risk both for the board and for the applicant in proceeding that way.
Well, Mr. Mario, but just may I answer, Mr. Lario, when you noticed at the last meeting, you included in your notice a statement that the applicant seeks any other variance or relief. That is, so if you're saying your interpretation is that having noticed saying you want any other relief, now you feel that I, I'm not clear, what are you saying then procedurally? Are you saying you want this carried? So that you, the applicant can specifically notice for that? And have your planner provide more test? I mean, I agree with you. I think the testimony he gave, although he may not have couched it as special reasons, I, it, it seemed to me that they were there in his testimony talking about the site and the fact it's constructed and there, no exterior changes are proposed. But if what you're suggesting is that it be carried so that you can notice specifically for that and present your planner, that, that's that's, that's your call, I guess.
Yeah. Michael, if you want to speak, hang on one second.
I'd wait, wait to hear, you know, well, maybe I will speak because as, as Karen pointed out last week, and it was basically off of something, a question I started with when I thought we were just hearing the appeal. And Karen said, no, they're presenting a case, they have all their, their consultants and they notice for any variance that may be needed, the catch-all. So at that point, that ended my question on that. And in my understanding that we, the board, were hearing both the appeal and variance requests. And that was answered by Karen. So I'm not sure how that's not the same.
Well, Mr. Lario, if you're concerned, if, do you want to confer with your client for a few minutes?
If, if I may, and I think in a minute, I'd like to have Mr. Jan now provide a little bit of testimony specifically couching this relief. And again, I do that just because ultimately the record here is critical.
I understand.
I, I think it's, it's important that that be provided. So if, if it's all right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a few minutes, talk to my client and then come back for this board.
We'll take a.
Can I, just Justin's had his hand up. I don't know if he has a comment. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I just, while we're on the topic of records, I just want to correct a minor factual error that I had in the last thing that I stated in the hearing. I looked at the 1999 Planning Board approval and it was for 119 beds in 119 rooms, whereas 120 was the maximum number of units per the findings of fact. So there was not 120, you know, the, the 120th unit that I presumed was not there. So again, very minor thing, but just seems like building a record is very important tonight. So I want to make sure I get the facts right.
It's 9:46. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think the, I think the recording is still on.
I don't know.
I did myself after I put my camera off. Coming back into play here, we're still not at 51. We have a few seconds to go. Okay, it's 9:51. We'll basically go back on the record. Claudia is, I assume as, as Stephen said, the recording is still on? Okay. Okay, so we're back on. Mr. Lasco, what did you determine?
Mr. Lario.
Mr. Lario, I'm sorry.
No problem. So I spoke to my client. Given the heightened standard for the, the D three variance relief, at this time, we would ask the board to carry that vote to a later meeting to give us the opportunity to provide the required public notice and to be able to provide planning testimony in support of that requested D three variance relief. Again, I understand that there's likely not going to have to be much new testimony by way of factual testimony. It's largely just going to be limited to planning testimony specifically on the D three variance relief. I think in order to advance this, obviously, the, the board will need to take a vote as to the appeal. I also would ask that the board take a vote as to the requirement for a site plan. That way, we can at least know when we come back before the board, what specifically will be required for us. We'll be able to provide the required public notice, provide the required planning testimony and make this as strong as possible. That, that is our request, Mr. Chairman.
Right now, it just, so I understand this. I understand affirming or denying Mr. Bridger's
Interpretation.
Interpretation. The site plan, if we, if we deny the site plan, if we, Karen, if we take a vote on the site plan and say we feel a site plan is necessary, he, Mr. Lario can't come back in at the next hearing with other testimony to, to basically negate that opinion, right? I mean, we, once we take action on it, we've taken action on it, right?
Well, that, that's correct. I guess the question is you're going to take a vote now whether you're affirming Mr. Bridger's interpretation. And then the second part of that is in light of information that staff has received since Mr. Bridger made that initial interpretation. And what you've heard, do you feel site plan is required? If you say, no, it's not, we feel we've heard enough testimony, then what's left is the D three variance or the relief from the requirement that they can't satisfy, which is a nursing home license. So and that's why I had asked Derek and also have, very happy to have input from staff. Are there still any other issues, site plan related, that they're looking, they want information about that or is has the testimony been sufficient? It's focused on parking. Is there anything else? And the applicant has said they're not changing any exterior. The exterior, they, they've provided testimony saying they think it's well-suited to what they want to do. But that's what, that's, I think, the vote that you're taking now. So it's a question of if you think there's site plan needed, it would be helpful then for either the board to identify that for the applicant, or I don't know Derek can identify, is there something else you want that ordinarily you would get with site plan?
We have to ask Derek, Mr. Weisman and Mr. Lesko.
Yep.
Yeah, I could begin, Derek, unless you want to. I, I think just as kind of a point of procedure, you know, as the board knows, a site plan is required along with any application for a variance or conditional use, you know, anything else. And then normally the Board of Jurisdiction will be asked and then allow for waivers from specific components of that application. And of course, all those timelines and things like that. So I do think there are things to be gained from having a site plan because we don't know what changes have occurred since 1999. You know, off the top of my head, there's an EV parking mandate. Is that going to apply with this granting of the new variance? Or is that not going to? I'm frankly not sure. Or are there DEP differences that have occurred since then or other municipal zoning requirements since then? I suppose if the board does not need to see that or is not worried about that, then, then we don't need the site plan. But you know, I think as, as this turns to just a straightforward or potentially turns to a straightforward D variance application, I don't see why we wouldn't process it. You know, with most, if not all of those requirements.
Can I just respond to that quickly? Because I think the waiver, how it was started, the waiver request, I think that was part of our initial zoning permit submission, waiver of site plan requirements to the extent necessary because ultimately this site's developed. I mean, and, and what we are proposing is to utilize the existing improvements on site as part of this substantially similar use. We are not proposing, I, I know DEP regulations, obviously, we're not proposing to rip up this entire site to bring it in conformity with modern stormwater regulations. And the reason is because we're utilizing, utilizing the existing improvements out there right now. So I think if, if the board looks to couch this request as a waiver of site plan review, I think that would be appropriate. If there's specific information that is being requested, we can provide that. But from a site plan standpoint, we're, we're going to utilize everything that's out there now. We're not proposing to change anything. But I think it's important, though, that there is a reviewed and approved site plan that controls for this site. There's a landscaping plan, there are board professional review memos, everything that was prepared and adopted by that board in 1999, we're going to be bound by. So this isn't a free-for-all here. We're, we're bound by what those prior approvals are, the landscaping, the improvements, everything that's contained on there, we'll have to abide by those.
I have a question of Mr. Bridger and Mr. Weisman and Mr. Lesko. If no changes are anticipated and, and Mr. Mr. Lario is trying to create a record here, so we've got to make sure procedurally we're correct. If everything, if, if requirements have changed over the years with regards to requirements to this site, do we, can we still basically allow the 1999 approval, site plan approvals to continue?
I don't know what the staff's view is, but if nothing is being changed on the site, and I guess if the site use is not being intensified, so what I'm getting at is you're not going to have increased stormwater runoff. I don't think we're talking about increased sewer capacity or anything like that, then I don't know, I don't know why the applicant would need to do anything to the site to comply with current standards, unless they decided they needed those 20 bank spaces. Then they're coming back in for site plan approval. And then I guess staff would start looking at things like stormwater runoff and DEP current regulations, et cetera. But I don't want to speak for staff. So what, what does staff say about that? Are you thinking that there's some other compliance they need to meet? If they intend to continue to use the site as it was originally used as a nursing home?
If they exist now.
Yep.
But, but one, one thing, one caveat is, as Mr. Lesko said, we assume that everything that was in the 1999 approval is a fact on the ground now. And without a as-built survey or something, we don't know that.
We're bound by that, though, Mr. Chairman. We're bound by those approvals. And we, I acknowledge that tonight, that we're relying upon those previous approvals.
Well, so I, 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 I would take Mr. Lario's representation to mean that I don't know what staff wants to confirm that representation, but if it turns out it's not accurate, then the facility would stop operating because they have, turns out, no, they didn't, they didn't comply with everything that was required in 1999.
It's a zoning violation. You're not, you're not in compliance with what you agreed to.
Correct. So Derek, does that, does that make sense to you? Or do you have other concerns? Or does any staff have other concerns? uh, make sense to you? Or do you have other concerns? Or does any staff have other concerns?
No, I'm I'm, uh, I mean, Justin's question about the EV charging stations, I I don't know if that applies. I mean, uh, that's, that's why you do have a site plan and um.
Right.
So in a perfect world, we would probably be reviewing a site plan if one was filed in February at this point, instead of doing this in the method we have done it and so far. So, um, but having said that, we've heard extensive testimony, we've heard extensive testimony about the use of the site. You know, my memo says the uses are, the definition of each use is is basically the same, except for the the title of each use. The site went through compliance review when the site plan was perfected um, in two thousand. So it should be in compliance. And if it's not in compliance, will be a zoning violation and they'd have to address.
So the basic question is, is really, do do we want to allow change between a nursing home and a drug rehabilitation center? Is that correct?
Question is, the interpretation that that Mr. Bridger made, we're affirming that or not. And I think the interpretation was correct. That's a.
I think it was too. I think it was incorrect. But I've also heard testimony that I tend to agree with that it you know, what are you going to do with this site? Can it only be a nursing home?
That's that's a whole separate issue.
And they end up being a drug and alcohol rehab. That decision hasn't hasn't been made, but it's, that'll be the next question. And we've heard a lot of testimony.
Isn't that a question we can answer tonight?
I thought we could, but they, you know. I'd like to, I'd like to get, I'd like to get over answering one question. Are we, you know?
Steven, Steven, what's been put out is that or or a plan for how to vote on this could be if there's a motion, if the sense of the board is you want to affirm Mr. Bridger's interpretation. Do you want to then waive site plan, submission of a formal site plan? And three, that you want to carry this application so that the applicant can formally notice for a D three variance, meaning relief from this requirement of a nursing home uh, license. The thought being that and that and that their planner can now provide some testimony to support the D three variance, to support this relief, to explain to you why. Yeah, so. And in doing that, if this is to your satisfaction, then yes, you would, it would end up being used for a substance abuse facility. So it's at the next hearing that you would.
But we haven't heard enough.
Testimony.
Haven't heard enough yet to make that determination.
You've heard enough.
I I think what you're hearing from the applicant's attorney is that he wants to make sure that the record we say fully supports granting that kind of a variance. The applicant had approached this initially saying, we don't need any variances. So their planning testimony was not focused on asking for variance. They did present testimony, but they weren't focusing on that because they weren't asking for that. So now the applicant is saying, all right, if this is the direction the board is heading, we'd like to actually notice now in their notice, even though I had told you and it's true that they had put a catchall notice, any variances, yes, they want them, but they're trying to make the record as complete as possible. And they also then will have their planner testify. And so part of this is this process, the applicant having heard the direction you're going in is asking, well, can you accommodate us now and carry it so that we can address?
Honestly, only two or three of us have spoken so far, so I don't even know how we're going one way or the other.
Well, okay.
Mr. Schreiber, if I can, real quick, just to address the question as to testimony, because I think it's a fair one. And I I can confirm that I do not plan on providing any more factual testimony onto the record. I think we've we've gone through factually how this site will operate, what the anticipated use is going to be, all of that. Really, what I need to put on the record after proper notice has been provided is Mr. Janow's professional planning testimony in support of that D three variance relief. It's a very limited scope. It 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 will not be hours of testimony. I I promise you that.
So you would also need conditional use authorization with the D three because it it's a conditional use, right?
So it would be well, a conditional use variance relief, if D three authorization, is that in in your ordinance?
They're linked, right? I mean, if you're saying it's a nursing home, we we agree that the the use is the same. It's a D three because it's a conditional use, you don't meet that standard, but so I think just legally, you have to apply for both, right? In your notice.
Derek, say that again. You're saying that they they don't meet. So are you saying, all right, say that.
You gotta give them conditional use authorization relief if you're giving them relief from a D three condition.
Correct, correct, that is correct. So yes, they're applying for a D three variance relief, yeah.
Yes.
Correct.
Then I move we with, I move we uphold our uh, original zoning board. Officer. Anyway, I'm trying to get this all out.
Okay.
So I I I think let's take the first vote on whether we agree that the zoning officer's interpretation was correct.
I will second Stein.
You have a question?
Me?
Yeah, Michael. You had your hand up a moment ago.
No, 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 I've I've been trying to, I've been trying to get to this vote for the last.
Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any conversation on this motion? This motion is to basically affirm uh, Mr. Bridges' original interpretation of the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. All right, Claudia, can you call a roll, please?
Ms. Chen?
Yes, I affir- I affirm the interpretation.
Ms. Coulson?
You're muted. Eve, you're muted.
Sorry, yes. Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we we got there. Now, now we have the next two. Do we do? Do we do the site plan issue now? Or do we, and then obviously the variance issue you do next, that's a, that's a future hearing. Because, because anyone?
All right, or if uh, someone wants to move that uh, the site plan be formal site plan be waived in light of the testimony that you have received over the last two hearing nights. Could make that motion and then see if there's a second and see whether it's approved.
Uh, Karen, I just have a procedural question.
Yes.
Uh, so the applicant never had to set up an escrow account for.
Well, that's a good point, but but once they, once they seek the three variance relief, don't they have to set up an escrow for that?
I guess it would depend on what's you know, being determined here. So if they don't, do they not need to submit anything new and we're just picking up next time? Or do they need to submit everything or, you know, however much?
There's a minor esc- escrow submitted, I mean, very minor. But typically, a condition of any approval is that all the uh, escrow fees for the professionals and staff uh, be brought current as a condition of the approval.
And and we can submit a paper with revised application form indicating the the additional relief we're seeking, so the paperwork is clean. And if there's any additional escrow requirement as part of that supplemental submission, we can include it at that time. It's not a problem.
Perfect.
Okay, so we does someone want to make a motion on the uh, on the um site plan? The necessity of a site plan, based on what we've heard with regards to parking and everything else.
I I would move to waive it based on um the discussion that that uh, we just heard from coming from uh, staff just now.
And all the testimony we've heard.
And the testimony, yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this? No discussion, okay. Claudia, can you call a roll?
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
A very weak yes, because I'm still not sure staff really, really is okay.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yep.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Okay.
All right, so Mr. Larria.
And now your last thing is to agree that you're going to carry this application. Now we need to figure out, since they're noticing it anyway, uh, what date will it be carried to, to allow the applicant? Well, actually, I guess we don't have to announce the date tonight because they have to be noticed.
We can work it out with
Yeah.
Board Secretary as to the the new date. And and again, I I want to thank the board again for for their their patience and understanding with this. And again, the the goal here is just to for both the board and for the applicant to make the record as clear as possible.
Rather have that.
So the board is in agreement on that. Applicant will renotice for the D three variance and they'll work out the next hearing date with staff. And then they can present a planning board, uh, planner testimony they deem appropriate to support that.
Derek and Justin and Dan? You're all right with that?
Yes, sir. I am.
Okay, okay, good. Okay. We we almost did it, so we're good. So that's, we'll call this one for the evening. And uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
You're welcome. Okay, um, does anybody want to take a break before we go into the next one? It's ten fourteen. It's we, you know, we, we have a hard stop at eleven o'clock, which is yet to be determined. We'll talk about that when we get started. And we're in the time where we can start a new, well, it's in the new application where we can start this.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I I, this is an important application and we don't want to rush. If we, you know, given the time, I know um, no one really expected the other application to go as long as it did. What would be our option in terms of the next date? I mean, we're trying to get here as soon as possible, but I don't know what the board has available. You know, is there, is there a convenient date that we could possibly have it continued to? Because I know that we're you know, we're we're probably not going to be able to get it all done, you know, by eleven.
I would agree.
We could do the August regular meeting, but I don't know how that is with vacations you need, you want to have seven members, um, right? Obviously.
Yes. That would be the twenty seventh?
Yes, sir.
Can we bring over um, Josh to, uh, he's in the panelists? I mean, oh, he's over already. Okay, good. You hear Josh, I just want to make sure. So we're looking at um.
It's twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh. Well, because it's a continuation, will we start the night?
Yes, you will. I apologize, I went so long tonight.
Yeah, that happens. Um, team, I know you guys can hear me. I know a few of them are over there. I just wanted to see if the twenty seventh presents a problem for anybody.
I'm currently conflicted. Um, if it works for everyone else, I might be able to move things around.
Who was that?
Justin.
Last guy, the planner?
Yep.
And I think I was supposed to lead off.
Oh, Justin, okay.
Yeah.
You're you're key.
Oh, can you bring um, Mr. Zinder over? I think uh, or or actually our witnesses, let's, why don't we bring them all over? Because I don't think they're over yet. It would be Josh Zinder, Kelly Osuch, George Jakomar, John McDonough and Stephen Ledrick. So Josh, we, I I know you heard us, but you couldn't speak. We're talking about potentially uh, carrying this to the twenty seventh, where we would be um, put on the top of the agenda?
Yeah, I can do the twenty seventh. I mean, if there's any possibility of doing a special meeting earlier, that would be great because we have a financing deadline we're pushing up against, which I know is in your purview, but it is our reality.
Can't do a special meeting, sorry. It's a question that's just, nobody's here. Twenty seventh is the best we got.
It was worth asking, you know?
No, no, that's fine. You got to ask.
And Mr. Lesko, did you say you may be able to do it? Because um.
If I'm the only one holding it up, I'll make it work.
All of the other seven board members are available?
I'm available.
I'm in kind of the same spot as as um, Mr. Lesko, actually.
Well, let's go through, Michael, are you available on the twenty seven?
Yes.
Okay. Um, David, are you available?
No.
No, okay, Stephen?
Uh, yes.
George?
Yes.
Eve, you spoke already. Can't even talk anymore.
Donna?
Harland.
Harland, are you available? Okay, Donna?
Yes.
Uh, Bernice?
Yeah.
I don't think I left anybody else. So, okay, that you heard it, is that okay?
So I'm I'm sorry, Eve, did you say that you were able to maybe make it or not? I know you've sat through our testimony, so.
I I know it's important. It's just tonight was a hard night for me to to break away too. So it's it's a, I I'll I'll do. The only one, I guess I'll say that I'll be there.
Well, if you can't, you can't. I mean, don't, don't, you know, you you make enough of a commitment to the board already, so we're not asking you to go to the mats for this, so just feel comfortable during.
I mean, a lot of people are involved and it's important, it's an important issue.
Well, we would have seven people without you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Eve, we we, looks like we still do. So if it's, if it's going to be um.
You know, if I possibly do that, do it. And I think that always gives people more of a sense of comfort, but if if you're willing to go with me, I'll I'll as it gets closer, I'll have a clearer idea of it.
Okay.
And I'll, if I can possibly be there, I will, because I I appreciate that.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right.
Josh, I think, do, are, what does it look like with our consultants? Have you heard from anybody that said that they couldn't?
John said he could, uh, Steve said he could, uh, George said he can and Kelly said they can, so that's everybody.
You can, right? Josh?
I was supposed to leave the day before, but I'm clearly going to be available. If that's the only date that I got, that's the one I'm going to take.
I mean, we could try for a special meeting, but it gets tough in September, but.
In August.
August is tough, because.
Yeah.
Can't we just vote on it tonight? We're all here.
Well, if you want to vote positively, I'll let you all vote now.
What a guy.
Okay, so we're gonna.
So for anybody who is watching in the public, this is being carried to August twenty seventh at seven thirty via Zoom, the applicant will not be obligated to provide any. at seven thirty via Zoom. The applicant will not be obligated to provide any further notice.
All right.
And the, um, the link will be posted on the municipal website on the agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
We appreciate your time. I know you had a hard evening. Uh, we would have really liked to get it done tonight, but, um,
As would we.
I, I think it, it would be too abrupt to go through portion and then a portion next time, so.
Yeah.
To do it all at one time, so.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone, board members, staff, or applicants. Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve.
Four meetings in three weeks, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot. A lot of time on your part, so. Three meetings in three weeks.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night.
Good night, everybody.